Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
This is Frank Barrigan.
Yes, sir.
Yes. So, you know, I wanted to thank Peter Hernandez and Anthony Battallo for starting those virtual focus groups. I really think that's the beginning of opening up our, our community here, opening up our businesses. I wish it was a little bit, they were more progressive, meaning a little bit faster instead of every couple of days, but I understand that, you know, we have to... Hello?
No, go ahead, Frank.
Hello?
Go ahead.
Oh, someone was talking. Okay, sorry. Yeah, so, you know, I, I like what's happening there, and I like that we're opening back up. So, I, I, I really like what Peter Hernandez is doing and Anthony Battallo is doing with those focus groups. Actually had some people reaching out to me and telling me, hey, should I get all these calls? And I said, yeah, get all those calls. I think they're great. Because you're a landscaper, you should get on there and you should understand what's happening. And I like that, you know, tomorrow they're going to be having the agriculture and ranching. So, I think which supports a lot of people, including myself. So, I really like that. But there's one thing that the city of Hollister's doing, you know, they're not having the farmers market, but I know the county has property that potentially we could open up another farmers market. And I was thinking maybe something like Vets Park where you guys would allow us to get together, have a volunteer group that would actually have a farmers market for our community, which I think would be great mentally for people to get back out there, for our local businesses to be able to get in front of our, our people again, our community again. So, I, I'm hoping that one of the supervisors would reach out to me. We have a group of people that would like to start a farmers market, even though it's kind of in downtown, but maybe at Vets Park. So, that's what I'm, that's what I'm calling in for and asking for. I'm not a local business owner here, but I do support a lot of my local business people. A lot of, a lot of them are my friends. And like I said again, thank you, Peter Hernandez and Anthony Battallo for doing what you guys are doing with the virtual focus groups. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Jackie, if you could please state your name for the record.
Yes, good morning. My name is Jackie Morris Lopez from San Juan Batista. And I also just want to weigh in on where Mrs. Salinas had mentioned about the implications of our health officer unexpectedly resigning after that contentious meeting last week with the board of supervisors. The supervisor Hernandez and Battallo.
Jackie and I apologize. We will allow you to speak 30 minutes under item number 18.
I'm not going to mention the word. I'm talking about the implications.
Okay, go ahead.
Is public health, public health, okay?
Fair enough.
It's a huge thing. It's a huge thing in the pandemic. I also listened to the town hall meeting yesterday that supervisors Hernandez and also Battallo sponsored. I caught that pretty late. I don't know where they're posting their public information to access, but how I'm tying this in with public health, I understand that we need to be cautious and mindful in how we get our economy back. You know, that's a national struggle, a local struggle, statewide, it's an understatement. But my concern is that without having oversight involved by a public health person, either a deputy or the health officer assigning staff to go out there and talk to the industry heads, you're kind of asking the fox to watch the hen house. I understand that Granite Rock and also Anderson Homes were on the call. I listened to that. They extensively went on about their measures, but they didn't outline exactly what the measures are. And I am a healthcare professional provider, so I understand how protocols have to be in a binder somewhere. You have to ensure that workers follow OSHA, whatnot. But my concern is that where is the input from our public health department? Where is the continuous oversight of the health of the workers on the site? Because this is my biggest pet peeve, is that you have a crew of workers that come from out of the area, that are coming to our county, which is wonderful for their families, wonderful for our economy. But currently, we need to really be mindful of how the virus is spreading, and we know now that it's through travel. And these are traveling workers. Thank you.
Thank you, madam. Just to remind the public that we are having two items on the agenda. One is to get an update on the Corona 19, and the other one is to discuss fiscal resources and other related items to the coronavirus. Next speaker? No more speakers? Okay, let's move on. Department head announcements, Ray?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I just wanted to make one announcement. We have, we've had weekly meetings with your board concerning COVID. Last week we met, but the week prior to that was a regularly scheduled board meeting, and today is our regularly scheduled board meeting. So, concerning department head announcements, I wanted just to kind of comment on one thing concerning the effort that the county had done. I want to thank everybody that was involved with this. April 25th, the chamber as well as the county were involved in actually handing out face coverings. I think it was a great event. There were just, just tons of people that were very appreciative. And there were thousands of masks or face coverings that were handed out. So, I just wanted to tell thanks to everybody that was involved with it. Our PIL for announcing the information, your board as well, because we did allocate some funding for that, and all the work that the chamber and the team actually did. So, I just wanted to say that, to make that a public comment. Another item is we've been actively reaching out to our legislatures as well as the state concerning COVID, and also to reaching out for more funding for our local community, in particular rural counties. So, we were a part of the 42 counties that actually reached out to the governor. I wanted to make sure that the board was aware of that for the New Cares Act, for receiving funding to the smaller counties. So, I just wanted to make sure that the board and the public are aware that we are reaching out. We're doing everything we can to redirect funding from the state and the feds to our county. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any questions on the board to Ray? Okay.
Yeah, one more announcement out of our auditor's office, I believe.
Good morning, Chair, Board of Supervisors. Joe Paul Gonzalez, speaking to you today as county clerk. Wanted to announce that on Monday, an executive order by the, by the governor allowed for the issuance of marriage licenses via video, you know, a video conferencing type of, of, of methodology, a medium of... So, you know, normally, we'd have to see the people who want to get married in person. They, you know, they come in and, you know, they show us their ID. We take a copy of that. We'll be doing that via via Zoom or, you know, some other medium. Person, people who want to get married, they simply have, you know, call the office. We'll set up an appointment, and we'll, you know, we'll start the process of issuing the marriage license that way. That's as normal as we can get. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Okay. Comments to staff? None? Okay, now let's go to board, board announcements. Supervisor Medina?
None, sir.
Thank you. Supervisor Battallo?
I just have, after 18. Thank you. Nothing today.
Supervisor Gilio?
Yeah, I have a couple of board announcements. So, these will also fall a little bit under 18, but they're... Actually, you know what? I'll just do one, and then everything else I'll do under 18, Mr. Chair, to go along with what we're doing with the public as well. I request your permission, Mr. Chair, to form an ad hoc committee, and I recommend the ad hoc committee be the members of Ambag, which are myself and Mark Medina. What I'm looking at doing, and I started working with Santa Clara County, and I think we needed to look at Monterey County as well. What does work look like in the future after everybody's back at work? And is there an opportunity for more telecommuting, thus keeping more people in our community, keeping them off the roads, traffic, and that sort of thing? Santa Clara County is already looking at that. If you look at a very recent Mercury News article, there's a group of supervisors, including the chairwoman of the board, is exploring that. And I would really want to get in contact with them and the Silicon Valley Leadership Group to see how we can perhaps facilitate that here. This is something that we've been looking at for years, frankly, and I think it's a good time to explore it now while people are all used to perhaps working from home. And I request your permission to start that ad hoc committee.
Absolutely. Supervisor Gilio and Medina will be part of that committee. Good idea. Anything else?
That's it. I'll save everything else for...
Thank you. Supervisor Hernandez?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. So, I'll try to make my comments really brief. You know, I wanted to make sure that I mentioned that everything that I've been doing has been consistent with protecting public health and making sure that we have a conversation, to a certain extent pushing for a strong conversation about what it looks like to restore our economy. So, so just, you know, to give people updates, you know, I was part of handing out masks that the chamber had coordinated with the EDC and the county ultimately is getting these masks back to, or handing them out to the community. That was, and with the help of Supervisor Gilio and Supervisor Medina, we were, you know, we rotated basically handing out masks throughout the day. It was over the weekend. And then also, you know, the RLF fund, which I won't get into, but basically it's a, it's a local fund along with the supportive view that the board supervisors, which I really appreciate, the using of the PPE funds or what's left, or, you know, ultimately at discretion of the board, the amount allocated. But the idea is to use it as a grant fund to support our businesses because of this decision to shelter in place and the damage that was done. And then also these focus groups, right? So, now it's the roadmap to recovery, trying to get the conversation with the business community about what it would look like to be ready. And it's funny because the sentiment was is it's such a moving ball with the state and their decision-making, you know, and I appreciate that it seems like now with their understanding, they're starting to think about what it looks like to open up this Friday, phase two, and then obviously going further into, you know, considering even the local, the local jurisdictions, the rural, possibly even moving sooner, phase three. And I know we're going to get an update about that, so I won't say too much about that. But I, last thing I wanted to leave with you is this whole idea of the roadmap to recovery, the focus groups, it really is about not only prepping, having an understanding with the business community about what it looks like to, to protect the public health while opening up, because we have a lot of business suffering. But then also consistent with that, I think it'd be a good idea. And it's, and it's a very, it's a letter that I had requested for Barbara from County Council to help write up, something that would fall within the lines of what they're already saying anyway, so it's not inconsistent with the state. But it really is a letter of support, and it basically, in our, in my estimation, it would be something to the effect of us raising our hand and telling the state, hey, we want to be the one of those considered, one of those rural counties to, to open up sooner. So, everything that I've been doing has been consistent, like I said, with public health, and at the same time protecting the business community. And the speaker that made, mentioned that there's consequences to, to decisions, completely agreed. And nothing that I said in that meeting do I regret. So, I want to be clear, I said it for a purpose. And I think as things have rolled out, you know, to a certain extent, I feel like I've been validated with the loosening of things already. So, I've been paying, paying attention. It's my job to pay attention. And I'm, I'm just trying to encourage, to a certain extent, a good conversation instead of a revolt from my community, is to ask for their help to work with us. And I don't think that's anything that would be inconsistent with what the, the board would want. So, again, I'm asking for support. If you don't, you know, ultimately, it's at your discretion. If you wouldn't, wouldn't agree, that's, I respect that. I would like to basically write my own letter to the state at that point. But, but all, all within the context, my hope is that we work together on something that lets the state know that we want to be the ones considered. We're doing a lot of the heavy lift, me and Supervisor Battallo. So, we're not asking for a blind, a blind approach. We're doing it wholeheartedly, opening up our eyes and figuring out what it means to open up our community sooner. Those are my comments, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a letter, Barbara?
I think maybe Supervisor Hernandez wanted to agendize it for the next meeting. Was that his request? Instead of having it heard today?
Is it okay that, that I just signed that letter just in behalf of the board and sent it over to the state of California?
I think Supervisor Hernandez wanted it to be agendized at the next meeting. And if the board did not want to agendize it for the next meeting, I believe he plans to just sign it himself. So, it's up to the board whether you want to agendize it at the next meeting.
Yes. Okay, then we'll do that. Okay, cool. All right. Let's move on. Okay, consent agenda. Is there any of the supervisors wish to pull any of the consent items out?
I'd like to make a comment, just a brief comment to not hold up the tracks. I just wanted to make a comment that county, the county is, is working as hard to run as efficiently as possible under these extreme circumstances. And I want to thank all of our team members from all of the different departments. If you look at these consent item agendas, they do not magically happen. They do not just end up on there. It's hours and hours of staff time and work on top of all the COVID response. And I want to thank you guys all for that sincerely, because you're working very hard. And then also, if you notice, I apologize, I lost the item number, but the mental health awareness month is also on there as well. So, I wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. And with that, that's all of my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
Comment or public comment?
Oh, shoot, yeah. Do you have any public comments? No, okay. What's the pleasure of the board?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second? Motion by Supervisor Gilio, second by Medina. All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Aye.
Thank you, Supervisor Peter.
Is that a 5-0 vote?
5-0 vote. All right, now we will move to regular agenda, number 18. Tracy?
We had a public comment pop up.
Morning.
It might have been a technology issue. Mr. Chair, I don't know if you want to address it. I just got notice from the clerk that we had a public comment that popped up.
On the consent?
Yeah, but it might have been a delay, so you may want to consider allowing them to speak.
Yeah, I will. Hold on, Tracy, for a minute, please. All right. Speaker?
Never mind. It's gone now.
That's okay. All right, Tracy, go ahead.
Good morning. Let me just see if I can... Can you see my screen? Are you able to see my screen?
Yep.
Okay. I was going to advance quickly to let Dr. Bogie, he's on duty right now, and I wanted to give him an opportunity to share prior to doing my presentation in case he needs to get back to work quickly. So, Dr. Bogie, are you on the line?
I am here. Can you hear me?
Good morning, yes. I appreciate you being on the call and wanted to see if you could provide a brief hospital update to the community and to the board.
Sure. Let me keep it brief. I think the Triple H update is we're looking to the future. We're prepared, ready to provide healthcare to the county in whatever the future may be. And ER, we want to remind everybody in the county, the ER is a safe place to come. We're concerned, people are showing up really, really sick because they're afraid to come into the ER. And we wanted to take the moment to reassure the public and the patients that we take extra precautions in the ER to make sure you're safe when you come in. So, please don't avoid the emergency room. If you need to come in, we are open and ready to take care of you. It's a safe place. And the hospital is in the process of opening elective outpatient surgeries back up. And I think that's basically our update, those three, three points.
Mr. Chair, may I ask a question?
Is there any, any updates on the skilled nursing facility that you could provide?
As far as?
Any COVID-19 updates or concerns? There was a possible question regarding skilled nursing facilities, if you don't have any.
Oh, I mean, we're doing, all of our testing is now done in Hazel Hawkins Hospital. We have two machines that we run coronavirus tests through. So, we don't outsource any more testing, so we're able to get tests back pretty quickly. Any patient being admitted to the hospital gets a coronavirus test. Any patient going to skilled nursing gets coronavirus test. Healthcare workers are being screened and tested as needed. The antibody test, if you read the article on San Benito link, you probably know where I stand on it. And infectious disease, we don't put a lot of faith in that test, but it's going to become the thing to do as it's hot in the press, and, and we'll follow accordingly. We'll be offering that test soon. We don't currently have the antibody test, but we will be offering it for whatever value it may add. But as far as the skilled nursing, I don't really have an update, except to tell you that any healthcare worker that is working over there that has any symptoms, we, we are testing them. And any patient that's being transferred over to the skilled nursing facility gets tested before they leave, and gets results before they go over there.
Awesome. Thank you. Mr. Chair, did you have any questions for Dr. Bogie or the board? Have any questions for Dr. Bogie?
Supervisor Gilio?
Yeah, briefly, Dr. Bogie, thanks for all your hard work and all your time that you give us, because I know you're super busy. I want to be brief as possible. I know, I know you mentioned it, but just specifically for the public, because I've had a lot of questions asked of me directly, and I'm really glad to hear you're on the line. Our hospital is not currently, or has been overwhelmed, and we're prepared to perhaps, if, if there is some uptick in infections, we're, we're prepared to deal with that and handle that if, if it does, if and when it does happen.
Yes, we will remain prepared to deal with any uptick. You know, we have a limited capacity, but we've prepped part of the hospital to handle a surge. So, we're going to just keep that part of the hospital kind of maintained and ready to go for, if, if it happens. So, we'll sort of be on the ready. And if this thing is a threat for the next couple of years, we'll just be ready for it. And that's kind of how we're going to approach this. We're going to, we're, we're looking towards, you know, post-apocalyptic existence. So, we're looking to see how we're going to function now in this new world. And I think that's part of our plan, is to remain prepared for some time.
Great.
Whether we see it or we don't, we'll be, we'll be prepared as, as a hospital.
Great. And then how, how are you guys doing on PPE supplies now? Are you doing okay? Are you caught up with the stuff that's coming out from the state now?
We're doing okay right now. Thanks for asking. We've developed a system where we've centralized the PPE, and we dish it out per shift. That's working pretty well. We're hoping that the supply lines open up so that, you know, as this thing, as, as we progress, because we're thinking the new future for us is going to be wearing masks all the time so that people feel safe and that we're protected. So, so right now, we're good. And we're hoping the supply lines open up at some point in the near future, and we can get our hands on some more. But we've got a system in place, and it's working well.
Okay, great. And this may not be for you, this may be for Tracy, and I'll leave it up to you guys, but maybe with some of your input. If, if there were some sort of infection or outbreak at a local skilled nursing facility, do we have plans in place? I reviewed kind of the California Department of Public Health, and I do realize that there are plans in place for, for the public. Are we prepared to deal with that if there is, is a spike, or two or three people get, get positive test in a nursing home? Are we ready for that?
Short answer is yes. It's a complicated answer, but we definitely are prepared for that. We've, we've created many scenarios, and we've got lots of ways to deal with different... We're very flexible. So, especially the emergency department, we've kind of led this thing. And that's kind of our thing. We, you know, we're, we're pretty flexible as a department. And so, as the leaders of this, for the hospital, we've, we've brought that flexibility to the different parts of the hospital, so they'll, they'll all be prepared. So, yes, the short answer is yes. We are, we are ready for a scenario like that. We hope it never happens.
Great. And then my, my very last question, and we're reading a bunch of stuff now about therapeutics that maybe perhaps shorten the disease. And are we, do we have any of that here locally? And have we used any? And have you seen any success in that anecdotally?
Early on, we used hydroxychloroquine. We had, we've had a total of five patients admitted with coronavirus. They've all been discharged. They all received hydroxychloroquine. This is before the, the FDA sort of went boo-boo on it. Whether it worked or not on these people, all I can tell you is nobody died. Only one person was ventilated for 12 days, and that person is home and recovering. So, we've had success with, with it just objectively. As far as the, the antivirals and so forth, they're quite expensive, and I don't honestly think that we have them in-house. And again, if you look at the data, they're controversial. So, I don't, the, I think the short answer is it's a case-by-case basis, when, when people get admitted and how sick they are, and can we get our hands on, on the meds and so forth. We just take it one case at a time.
Thank you, sir.
Does that answer the question?
Yes, thank you. The one I was specifically thinking about was remdesivir. I don't know if I'm pronouncing that right or not, but that one's been in the news lately. But thank you for the answer. I appreciate it. And thank you for all you're doing.
Sure, thanks. I would tread with caution on all these meds as they press, sort of grabs onto something and runs with it. If you look at the data, I think the early data on hydroxychloroquine was awesome, and now the FDA doesn't like it. They like remdesivir. And again, it shows maybe a slight decrease in symptoms over time. Again, it's early to tell on any of these things. But certainly, we are, we are open, and we practice hard medicine here. So, we're, we're open to use any artillery that we can against this.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Tracy?
Any other questions, Dr. Bogie?
Any questions? Supervisor Hernandez?
Nothing, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. No, the board does not have any other questions. Thank you, doctor.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Bogie, for being on the call.
Thanks, guys. Go back.
Okay, thanks. Let me go back to the beginning of my show here. Okay, so, since our last board meeting, our case count has increased by four. We currently have two active cases, 52 confirmed, and 48 recovered cases. We will continue to monitor these cases daily. California data, we have 54,937 cases total. The numbers continue to rise, but it seems that we're getting more steady as the numbers are slowly decreasing. So, as you all know, on Monday, May 3rd, the county shelter in place order expired. We are now following the governor's stay-at-home order. We did put out some guidance regarding some businesses that were more restrictive in our order, and are now released. We have guidance regarding construction, real estate, space-based services, mortuaries and cemeteries, and golf courses. Those are all available on our website. And just a reminder, it is guidance for these industries to follow. It's not an order. The county is still seeking and asking all businesses to adhere to the social distancing and fending say protocol. It is a request. It is not in order. And the guidance just helps to ensure the health and safety of our county. I listed our website here for further guidance. And we are, we also have frequently asked questions up on the website as well regarding the order. So, if there's questions that you have, you may look on our website for those answers. Yesterday, the governor provided an update to the state. It was an encouraging update. He, he issued the state a report card for how we're doing, and it appears that we are meeting all the key measures and are prepared to move to stage two of his roadmap. And he indicated that California is on track, so that was encouraging. Later this week, he's going to release some public health guidance for certain stage-two sectors, including some small retail, manufacturing, and other businesses. We are anxiously awaiting that guidance. Some of the businesses and employers who are in those areas are possibly able to reopen as of this Friday, if they meet the guidelines. But once we receive the guidelines, we will be putting stuff out as quickly as possible. He did indicate that not all stage-two businesses will be open on Friday, but they're hoping that some of them will be able to open locally. Maybe some of our florists, sporting goods stores, and some other small retail clothing stores will be able to open out of Friday. He did indicate that some of the sectors, such as offices and dining and restaurants, will be a later part of the opening in stage two, and we're hoping that we can move towards that quickly. It, it was, it was encouraging to see that he allows for some regional variation, which will allow counties to move quicker through stage two if they feel that they're ready, and they can attest that they meet the state's readiness criteria. We are working quickly on being prepared for this and starting our own readiness plan so that we can provide it to the state as soon as possible. The governor also signed an executive order directing the state public health officer to establish this criteria to determine this. And so, again, we are looking forward to getting that guidance and moving forward. Our agency is prepared to... Our agency is prepared to accept and take on this responsibility and move it forward. We talked about last week that we've created a roadmap to recovery advisory group. We are meeting regularly to assist in the reopening of the county. As some of the board members have indicated, we have created virtual focus groups with businesses to get input and feedback. It's a big, great partnership. You can see the entities listed above. And we had our first meeting yesterday with the construction industry, and gardening, and landscapers, and it was a good meeting. And we're hopeful that there will be more participation in the next meetings as they come. We, as an agency, are developing an online form for businesses to request to open during stage two. We need to wait for the guidance from the governor and the state public health officer in order to know exactly what the guidelines are. We will create a separate email and hopefully have the tool online so that businesses can complete the tool online and submit it electronically to our agency for approval. We need to get clear understanding of who needs to approve the guidelines. And so once we get that, we'll make sure that we report it out as quick as possible. We talked briefly about the emergency feeding program for seniors last week. The counties and our community partners actually met yesterday to continue to assess the need and requirements in the short-term timeframe for the program. It ends in June. We're working with our AAA, our Adult Advisory Committee, and they were on the call yesterday just touching bases with other counties. It doesn't look like many have opted in yet, but they are exploring it as well. And I wanted to put out, if you're a local restaurant and you're interested in providing meals through this program, if you could email me and just let me know that you're interested in the program, that's one of the indicators that we need to ensure that we have a local restaurant or provider who's interested in providing free meals a day for seniors. So if you could email me and let me know if you're interested, or if you need more information regarding the program, we can ensure to get that to you. We have opened an alternate test site today. Lynn Mello is on the line. She is the deputy director of our public health services, and she's going to touch on our alternate test site as well as some information regarding contact testing. Lynn, are you on the line?
Yes. Good morning. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Great. Good morning, Board, Honorable Chair. Yeah, so of course, the state, as you know with the governor, has been wanting to increase testing. And a new testing site was assigned to San Benito County, and that's actually through the federal government. The hours of operation will be Sunday through Thursday from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and it is at the Veterans Hall. And as you know, every year, we do our mass vaccination point of distribution exercise at the Vets Hall, and that has prepared us to be able to assist OptumServe, the vendor, to be able to carry out this endeavor. This is a federally sponsored test site, not a county-run endeavor, however. Public Health Services is providing guidance, marketing, outreach, and technical assistance to Optum Serve, the federal contractor. Testing has begun. It began this morning, and we are doing a soft rollout and a pilot this week. And we are, we are working with our first responders and our county emergency medical services director to be able to get our first responders through the testing first. Already, there were some glitches, and one of the things that the state and Optum Serve and another group called Logistics Health, who's been helping with the scheduling, has led us, has reminded us is that when you roll out something this big and this fast, there will be hiccups. And so we've been patiently sort of working out those hiccups and wrinkles. And thus far, I think it's going pretty well, for the first hour at least. The tests are by appointment only. There are no walk-ins, and I think that's obvious why there would be no walk-ins. There is an online registration platform and a multilingual call center for registration and appointment-making. And we've done some user experience tests with those. And there have also been some glitches there that we've been working out. And, you know, as I said, this is a rapid-response deployment by the federal government, and we have to work out, you know, we have to work those kinks out. The tests will be made readily available to first responders, to healthcare workers, to vulnerable populations, and they will just need to register online or by phone appointments. And they are eligible for repeat tests. Optum Serve has the capability to bill insurance, and patients may be asked if they have insurance. If they do not have insurance, there will be no cost for the test. We have health educators that have devices and, you know, iPads, iPhones, other devices, and they are going out into the field to do outreach, to help vulnerable populations register either on, you know, on a device or by phone. And then we'll be doing a press release by the end of the week with more instructions for the public, because we want to make sure that we work out these kinks and that the public doesn't have to necessarily wait, you know, hours for their appointments because of the registration glitches. We want to make sure that all systems are in order before Optum Serve opens the testing to the general public. And that's all I have on testing. Are there any questions on this?
Lynn, Supervisor Patel.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Lynn, for everything that you're doing. And when I heard about this program last week, I was very excited. I think it really goes, the testing has to go hand-in-hand with the reopening of our county as well as the nation. And anyway, what I'm really deeply concerned about is an incident that took place this weekend out at one of our processors with a positive employee and possibly exposing others. Shouldn't this be kind of right up, rise right to the top of the list as far as having available testing to that facility immediately? Those are essential workers. They're essential, as much as probably as healthcare and public safety, in order to prevent a, an outbreak or at least a survey of what's happening. And that, this is real recent, and I'm not sure what the health department has concluded as far as the protocols for that facility and the safety and well-being of those employees and assurances. That's my question.
Yes. Well, we had contact with Taylor Farms yesterday, and one of our staff with their HR resource manager. And the, the, the testing is already in progress. A number of employees have tested. And without getting into too much detail about, about all that, there have been numerous negative test results have come back already. And Taylor Farms has quarantined a number of employees that worked most closely with the confirmed positive case. And all, all the modifications and safety measures are in place. All employees have face coverings. The social distancing is also in place. Signs have been posted, you know, to maintain social distancing and hand hygiene. Temperatures are actually even being taken. And every, high traffic areas are being sanitized on an hourly basis, and the facility is deep cleaned and sanitized twice a day.
Agreed.
And so that's what we know from our investigation there. And testing is in progress. And of course, the employees are eligible to register for our local federally-sponsored testing at our, that hall, too.
Great. It's really important that they have that assurance that they're, they're not infected, as well as for protection themselves and their families primarily. And also a reassurance to the nation that our food supply chain coming out of our county is, you know, safe, and we're right on top of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Supervisor Patel.
You're welcome.
Go ahead, Lynn. Continue.
Okay. I'm going to talk a little bit about contact tracing now. So contact tracing is what happens when we get a positive case. And it's sort of, it's sort of like a concentric ring. You start with the person who is the positive confirmed case that's in the middle. And then you go in circles around that person, metaphorically speaking. And it starts primarily with their household. And so we talk to, our nurses talk to the household members to look at their symptomology, where they work, you know, if they're feeling sick. And then they make a determination about isolation and quarantine and testing. And so depending on their symptoms, their proximity to the patient, their, the duration of time with the patient, they make a determination to quarantine these folks and/or isolate and send them for testing. We have a 100% contact tracing rate. What that means is every case, every positive case that we know of in San Benito County that's been reported to us through laboratory testing has had 100% contact tracing done. Now, other counties that are larger and maybe don't have enough staff do not have that luxury. We happen to be in a good position right now because we have a full staff of nurses. And incidentally, it's National Nurses Week, and so I just want to do a shout-out for the nurses. They have been working around the clock, 24 hours. They've been on call and on nights and weekends to make sure that we are working hard to contain this disease and to not let it spread in our community. You know, our nurses, nurses in general are some of the most skilled and trusted professionals, and they know how to engage and develop trust with people. And thus, those cases and contacts have listened and engaged with the nurses and worked with us to isolate, quarantine, and get tested. And then we also link them to resources, because we've had folks that have had housing issues and, you know, have had shelter, you know, shelter issues, and they've had other, what we call comorbidities or underlying health conditions. So we've had to work with them to get them their medication, to get them food, to get them a place to isolate when they had no housing. We also monitor those patients every day, and those contacts every day, everyone that's in quarantine. And we monitor their symptoms, and we send them for testing if their symptoms worsen. And we also work with their employers to give them work clearance. There are certain criteria that they have to make, that they have to meet in order to go back to work and to be cleared. And just like the hospital has a surge plan for a volume of incoming COVID cases, we also have a surge plan for contact tracing. And so we're expecting this. Now that we have a more robust testing program in our community, we are preparing for more positive cases and for more contact tracing. And so we are, we have a surge plan in place. We have, we have sort of designated disaster service workers to step up and to be trained and receive what's called just-in-time training to do contact tracing if we reach a certain number of cases. And then now, you've probably heard that the governor with the state is preparing for the training of 20,000, an army of contact tracers. They're working with UCSF and UCLA to train through an online platform. And I've been on calls with the Department of Public Health, the State Department of Public Health, and they are working on the training aspect of that right now. They're going to be rolling that out in waves as well. And so we do not need those folks at the moment, but we will also want to have some of those folks on standby. And this is a long-term plan, because we may be dealing with this for years. But because we're small, and because we are in a great position with nurses, this has been manageable. And so I'm very optimistic about our capability to do contact tracing. And I'm very proud of our team that has been able to reach the 100% contact tracing goal. And that's about it.
Thank you. Any questions for Lynn?
Questions from the board?
Just briefly, Mr. Chair, Jim Gillio. Lynn, thank you very much, and frankly, you answered all the questions about contact tracing, testing. I really appreciate those thoughtful, thorough answers. I had a lot of questions over the last week, frankly, about all those issues. And we are ahead of the curve on most of these items, and I really appreciate that. And I was really glad to hear yesterday that the governor, immediately, he's looking at, I think, 3,000 a week and a total of 20,000. So whatever we can do to get in on that. And then briefly, for Tracy, you had mentioned the meals for seniors and through restaurants registering. There's also a website. It's called the, I just lost it, to be honest with you. But if you go to the California COVID website, it's right on the front page. Restaurants can express their interest to register now, and I believe Chris, our OES manager, is working really hard on that with the other county team members. And I wanted to thank you for that, because that'll be a jumpstart, not only for restaurants, but also we can get meals out to our most vulnerable folks. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Supervisor Gillio. Any other questions, Supervisor Medina?
This question is for Tracy. Throughout the, throughout the week, I know you've been working on this also, but I just wanted to bring this into a public forum, is a lot of the schools in the county, they're talking about doing some type of a drive-through graduation ceremony. Are you working with the superintendents of these schools to ensure that we safely can do this and reward our children of the success, whether it was an eighth-grade promotion or a high school graduation?
Absolutely. What we've, what we've asked the superintendents and probably the principals is to initiate some type of plan and email them as to how they want to strategize these types of ceremonies. I've received something from Kip Ward for two local schools with a plan through Diego from the Hollister School District. What the plan will be is to review those plans, review them with our health officer, and if everything looks, we will be making plans moving forward. So I also had an email this morning from So I also had an email uh this morning from Sacred Heart, um and so any school system that wants to engage in this activity, we ask that they submit an email to itself and I will review them with the um health officer for approval. So thank you for bringing that up.
No, thank you very much, it may seem like a a small trivial thing, but I think it's uh great to see our children being able to uh receive that promotion or the actual diploma for uh high school. Thank you very much for your work Tracy, appreciate it.
Agree, thank you, we agree.
All right, thank you Supervisor Medina, Supervisor Hernandez?
A question, Mr. Chair.
I I just want to uh thank Tracy and her team uh for their really hard work, it's just been unbelievable how much uh work they've churned out and and Lynn, we really do appreciate the nurses and and the fine work that they're doing out in the field. Um, and it it's just um phenomenal for a small county and and I'm very proud of you know of of our staff and what they've been able to accomplish and you know, one thing that's really important to me is, you know, one of the public speakers at the beginning of our meeting said something about, you know, there's two types of people out there and um, you know, we gotta choose and and that can't be further from the truth, we we don't, we cannot choose and we should not choose. Uh, we gotta provide a a public health uh for our community in balance of what we hope to accomplish as we reopen. Um, and uh, we're all, we're all one people and we have that responsibility and and you're you're doing a fine example of what what is really important to everyone and so we're keep up doing the the fine work and again, much appreciation.
Thank you Supervisor Patel. Okay, you have anything else to, anything else to present Tracy before I go to public?
Yes, briefly, um, I just wanted to provide a brief update on our enforcement, um, we continue to receive concerns regarding non-essential businesses. Um, to date, 43 businesses have been deemed non-essential, uh, we're hoping that this is gonna relax very soon, um, just um, the county will continue to enforce the governor's orders and the county's face covering order. So um, our public health officer, Dr. Gillarducci, is on the call and first I just want to say thank you on behalf of my agency as well as the county for filling in for us as our interim public health officer, we appreciate you, we know you are very, very busy wearing very many hats, some in Santa Cruz, some here and now another one here, so I just want to personally just thank you for being there for us and um, wanted to open the floor for you to kind of introduce yourself, give us a brief history of your work and your work here in San Benito County and any highlights you may want to present to our and answering possible questions from the board. Thank you, Dr. Gillarducci.
Good morning, everyone, uh, thank you for having me on here. So yeah, just briefly, I have been um connected to San Benito County for quite some time, my my parents uh lived in um in Hollister for a number of years, my dad worked at Paladine um uh over on um on uh in in Hollister for for many, many years. And I've been the EMS medical director in San Benito County for about five years now and before that um in Santa Clara County and um, so it's a, I'm happy to uh to help fill in on this this role, obviously this is a very difficult time for everybody and I certainly appreciate all the concerns that people have regarding safety and the balance of of maintaining safety in the community as well as um the necessary um sort of trade-offs that have to happen economically as well. And so uh, maybe I'll just open by saying that uh I think we're in a position now we need to remember, we're in a position now to start talking about Phase Two and reopening because of all of the hard work that um our health department here in San Benito County has done, uh, we could have easily seen uh exponential growth in our community and certainly other rural communities in the United States have seen tremendous growth in cases and and we've been very fortunate to have the fine leadership of Dr. Fenchurch, of Tracy and Lynn's work and her uh her team's work in terms of keeping the case count down. So that's why we're in this position now to be able to to speak about reopening. Uh, now, uh, as we do so, we have to do so very carefully and uh and that's gonna mean uh a lot of the things we've already talked about, it's gonna mean um uh the the testing capability, we we certainly need to have the ability to monitor the extent of disease in the county and be able to make adjustments as necessary. We um, we need to have the contact tracing workforce as our case count does go up, I think it will go up at some point, uh, we're gonna need to be able to jump on those cases quickly, we need to have surveillance of high-risk groups such as Taylor Farms, skilled nursing facilities, other congregate medical facilities, which is the or other congregate living facilities such as the jail and so forth, so we need to understand the level of disease in those in those situations, of those vulnerable populations and uh obviously we need to maintain our hospital capacity. And so all of those things need to come into place as we move into Phase Two and and later on to Phase Three of the uh of the reopening. Uh, so we'll be working closely on those things. Um, and um, uh, one brief comment about the uh the the face covering um uh order and that one I believe does need to stay and the main reason is that uh face coverings, number one, don't really um um cause any kind of economic harm, if you will, and they are really an essential component to limiting the spread of disease in our in our community. We have to remember that facial covering isn't really just about protecting yourselves, it's about protecting the people near you, so I'd like people to think about facial coverings as a uh as a social activity, as an activity that is intended to be respectful of people around you who might be more vulnerable to the effects of this disease and that um that by you wearing a mask is the way of you um showing respect and care for your fellow citizens, so um, just wanted to throw that out there and I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Supervisor Gilio?
Uh, Dr. Gillarducci, this is Jim Gilio, um, thank you and this may be for Tracy or a tag-team type question, but um, just to kind of summarize what what I heard yesterday from the governor's press conference and then also we had an emergency California State Association of Counties meeting at 1 o'clock directly after that meeting to kind of um interpret that for a lot of the rural counties that had questions and frankly, all counties, but many of the rural counties did have a lot of questions. What I what I had heard from both of those meetings was and it's kind of layout what my understanding is and maybe you can correct me when I'm wrong because I'm I'm wrong frequently is um, so by Thursday, it looks like the state said they're gonna have some guidance coming out from the uh state public health department, that's gonna filter out to all the different county public health departments and then we were told that you as our public health officer will need to take a look at what that guidance looks like and then make an attestation, so to speak, of our hospital capacity, our testing capacity, our contact trace capacity, all the different things that we just all talked about now and then after that happens, then um a plan perhaps can come back to the board of supervisors from the public health department for these uh level two or uh stage two businesses and then also the 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 farther out stage two businesses, depending on county by county, they may be able to brought in a little bit on on timing depending on, you know, what all of those uh actual facts look like, not just shooting from the hip, but actually using all the facts that we talked about. Is that where where your understanding is, you and our director of public health, or am I misunderstanding that and if if so, can we clarify for the community?
Uh, yeah, that's my understanding as well, we will need to demonstrate that we have the ability to manage uh the reopening and that includes all the elements you talked about, the prevalence of testing containment, uh hospital capacity of vulnerable populations. So if we don't have those elements in place, um then we have to hold off on um on stage two or uh limit the extent of state of stage two, so our obligation will be to um demonstrate that we have the capability.
Supervisor Patel?
Yeah, I I was really happy that Supervisor Gilio uh asked that question because I think that's key for us as how we're move forward to reopening Samuel County and I I hope people understand that and uh and I know you're a doctor, you're you're working hard on that and uh waiting for the state for their guidelines come down in the next day or two. Um, and as you know Supervisor Hernandez and I are participating in the roadmap to recovery and its workshops and we have a schedule, I I want to thank you for uh the guidance orders that uh you have issued on on each of those sectors of uh of our business community and we look forward to working with you uh to try to convey uh those guidances out uh to the people who need them the most for the safety and protection of, you know, not only the workplace, but for us to be able to even continue to move forward. Uh, and again, um, what, uh, I had a question as far as, okay, I I know what it is, where I was going with this. What do you see the other counties doing as far as some, is enforcement needed or is it just guidance and then we, as a public health office, we kind of hope for the best that uh, you know, the managers and businesses comply with it or or is there a follow-up? Uh, what do you see us doing going forward to make sure that uh people are taking this serious because I I I think that's, I'm not worried about, personally worried about COVID-19 anymore, I'm worried about stupid and that, you know, if you're not following the guidance, if you're not following the the health orders that the state has gotten out and and as you pointed out a little earlier about mask, uh face coverings and why, um, that's how you're get COVID-19. And uh, before it was just an unknown thing, now we don't have any excuses, so that's kind of my question.
Yeah, thank you for that, that's a great question. So you know, generally speaking and I I I believe the whole team at public health uh would agree with me on this is we we want to be um the least restrictive on people as possible and uh, but what that means is that uh if people don't act responsibly, then we would we would have to become more restrictive and that means that I would have to institute orders that would limit certain activities if we don't find voluntary compliance in those areas, so it means really understanding the prevalence of disease, it's really gonna be a data-driven thing, it's not gonna be an emotional decision, it's gonna be about uh uh what we see as uh the um trajectory of disease in our county and our our ability to deal with that and so uh we'll have to continually strike that balance between those two things. And uh, so I do ask people, I I think that this is a social responsibility question, this is about um how you think you fit in society and if you're openly defiant of those orders, I I sort of think of it kind of like um uh like traffic laws, if you openly defy red lights, if you openly define speed limits, uh you'll probably get away with that a lot because there won't be an officer there to see it, but you uh have to recognize that that is creating a risk for everybody. And so while while your personal risk from disease might be low depending on your situation, you have to remember that the person that um uh other people in your life, um such as elderly parents or other people that have pre-existing conditions or um or or if you're carrying the disease and you carelessly spread it to somebody else who may have more vulnerable um, you know, aspects to their lives, then uh, you know, you have some responsibility to your fellow um, your fellow community. And so uh again, we'll have to watch that carefully and this will require some pretty detailed surveillance of our of our community to make sure that we're staying within um the acceptable limits of of what we need to do.
Okay, thank you very much.
Supervisor Medina?
Yeah, this is uh Mark, just Mark Medina, just uh something to add in not dealing with this, I just wanted to let people know that when we have people that are listening to this, whether it's via audio or just Zoom, they can see us, can you restate our name possibly, that way they know who's speaking, just wanted to uh see if we can agree on that, please.
Yeah, it's a good idea, yeah, no problem.
Mark Medina.
No. Thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Jim Gilio?
Just just real briefly, uh, doctor, I forgot to say that probably the most important thing is number one, I wanted to thank you, uh, in my prior law enforcement career, I ran across you several times and you're very well-respected in in the industry and I gotta tell you, I support you 100% and thank you for being here on such short notice to to help us, um, you know, based on what happened with us last week, so I really appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Gilio?
Thank you.
Supervisor Hernandez?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, yeah, I wanted to introduce myself, uh, a while ago, I actually been trying to talk to staff to see about talking to Dr. Gillarducci, I definitely want to start on the right foot and I appreciate uh, you know, the comments that he made, I especially appreciate him saying that he wants to be, you know, the least restrictive, I think that makes total sense, you know, when it comes to uh the the public impact, I I would just encourage you and and the board to consider that that um, there's there's obviously other things that wait here, I mean, I just read the article from Beneath a Link, uh, which Dr. Bogey, I guess, you know, granted with all the respect, is not gonna be able to answer and that's fine, but uh, you know, it's talking about another surge and that surge is from people staying home, uh, not basically going into the hospital and now all of a sudden we're dealing with layoffs and we're dealing with basically uh um other people having more severe chronic issues with heart disease or stroke, they're not going in, they're feeling symptoms and and because of that, so there's impacts and so just, you know, I feel like we need to have a balanced conversation uh and and I feel like uh we're we're very much focused on public health, it's very obvious of, you know, but there's also a stress and and you know, so one of the the questions that it keeps coming up and you know, it's up to you, Dr. Gillarducci, if you would like to answer, but you know, healthy people staying home or sheltering in place, so there's these comments about a second spike and all that, wouldn't that by default mean that if you're keeping people that are home healthy, that means they're not exposed to it and they're gonna be, normally they're gonna be fine uh if they do get it, but now all of a sudden you're keeping them home, so then yes, you're gonna get a spike and then that that's gonna put a stress on the board and maybe even on the state to say, well, we need to shut things down again and and I just fear for that personally because I think that's gonna create a whole nother ripple effect and I'm already seeing it right now, there's businesses that are ultimately, um, or I'm hearing about it is is there's businesses basically operating under the radar because they have to, they're like so much constrained by this that uh they're almost at a desperation mode, which is the the comments that that again, I don't regret that I mentioned last week and it wasn't to get confrontational, just to the address the reality is if we don't talk about the reality, that reality still exists and it's gonna have an impact and ultimately we're gonna, you know, try to scramble to figure out how to address it and to a certain extent, it's gonna be very easy to put the burden of of proof or the burden on the on the community and I don't think that's fair, I mean, so so I completely agree with you, Dr. Gillarducci, we gotta work with the community, our hope is that we 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 become partners with the community and ultimately that's what I'm encouraging the board to do is is uh, we need to have a really well, this which which is exactly why I've been pushing really hard for us to uh not only open up but do it safely, but uh have a very focused conversation about that with these focus groups, um, talking to the business community and getting them engaged, so so all things considered, I I applaud you and I appreciate you for for you uh working with us and and taking this position, I know it's not an easy position, I'm, I can only imagine all the stuff that you're dealing with on the back end, so I definitely want to thank you and um and and all the 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 um the staff that's working hard with you to do what what we need to do to protect our community, I just, my biggest stress to to you and to the board is for us to really have a a balanced conversation where we're we're saying, look, the burden is gonna get, is is heavy and because it's heavy, uh, to a certain extent, that burden might be the very cause of a spike, uh, in my mind, so there's there's gotta be ways to address it and 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 I know the answer, you know, from some folks is, well, that's why the government's handing out money, putting things on a credit card is not a long-term solution, a business owner by default that's successful doesn't think that way, they don't want to get into debt, so there's questions on why they wouldn't take a loan, well, because they don't want to get into debt because they realize you take a loan, you're, you know, you, no one should ever have to put uh their food on a credit card, but that's what's happening with the business owners is they're putting their normal expenses that are usually paid through profits, now they're putting it on a credit card and that creates another layer of stress that starts to create a bubble effect, so again, without being redundant, those are my comments and and I I appreciate you and I thank you, Dr. Gillarducci, thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Hernandez. All right. All right. Thank you, doctor. Tracy, that concludes your report.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Let me open up to the public.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, madam.
I, I didn't want to, um, really have to, to delve in today to all the enforcement mechanisms that the county has, but I defer to the board whether you want us to bring forward at some point in the future, an alternative method such as an ordinance, a local ordinance. And I, I won't agendize that unless the board indicates that they feel like they need additional mechanisms beyond the ones that are already existing.
Okay. Let's, let's pull the board, how the board feels. Supervisor Gilio?
I, I think we should see how, how it goes and we have a lot of movement and change happening this week and I think we should hold and, and see how we're doing.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor, uh, Portello?
Yeah, that, that, that makes sense to see how things kind of open up and, and change, but I, I think we have to have some tools in the toolbox eventually.
Yeah, we already do have some and we can.
Okay, thank you Supervisor Medina?
Supervisor Medina, I agree with both Supervisor Portello and Supervisor Gilio, with the exception, if we have to come back and do anything, we do it in public. We do not do it behind closed doors. We are speaking on behalf of our constituents and they deserve to hear what we have to talk about and not, once again, in closed session.
Okay, I will pull the board on that one. Thank you. Supervisor Hernandez?
So what was the question, Mr. Chair?
Barbara, you want to repeat the question?
Yeah, um, without, uh, just whether the board wanted me to bring forth an additional tool for enforcement, which would be a local ordinance that would be enforced through administrative citations. We already have other tools in the toolbox, but this would be an additional tool.
Uh, for enforcement, yeah, I mean, it's, it's, right now it should be an administrative process. That's my, my comment. It should, it should never be a, uh, a heavy-handed tool.
So you don't support?
Those are my comments, Mr. Chair.
So Supervisor Hernandez, you don't support any additional tools then?
Well, I, I mean, uh, so a tool is under the assumption of how it's going to be used. So to, to frame it as a tool, it's, it's kind of ambiguous. Uh, if, if you're going to use the tool like a hammer to, to bit, to build a fence and that makes sense, but if you're going to use the tool to hurt somebody, then that doesn't make sense. And that's basically, so I need a little bit more clarity.
Okay. Okay. Now, the question was brought up that if, if that discussion does occur that it needs to go in close, in open session. Supervisor Gilio, do you prefer to have it in closed session or open?
Open session.
Supervisor, uh, Portello?
Oh, open session, of course.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll just defer until the board brings, well, I heard three no's at this point in time, so at least three no's.
Yes.
So we'll wait until the board directs us to bring that forward.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, good. All right, now I'll go to, um, public comments, speakers?
Please state your name for the record and you'll have three minutes to speak. Jackie, if you could please state your name?
Yes, this is Jackie Morris Lopez from San Juan Batista. Um, good morning, um, Board of Supervisors and Chair, Ms. Dela Cruz. Um, I just want to also comment briefly. The Zoom meeting link, I'm on that on my computer, but it's not showing any video or any, um, photos of who's speaking and anyone at the meeting and other, um, public attendees at the meeting. So I want to speak to the Taylor Farms case and thank you Supervisor Portello for bringing that up, um, and also Deputy Health Officer Lynn Mellow. I think that this is a serious situation. I understand that the health deputy, uh, did talk to them yesterday. I don't know if she said she visited the plant, but I think that this requires repeated conversations, site visit, follow-up, follow-up, follow-up. And I'm speaking as a concerned San Juan Batista resident, which is District Two, as you know, Supervisor Portello's area. Um, I feel that we've only addressed the containment in the plant. You are overlooking the fact that a lot of these workers, and bless their hearts, they're hard workers, they come to our small community and provide business to our small business owners such as the Windmill, JJ's Burgers, Bolero Taqueria, Bolero Gas, and all of the rep, the businesses that are here in town, primarily the ones that I mentioned, um, for their food and their groceries and their drinks. So as a resident, my thinking and as a healthcare provider, the containment of that disease or that infection does not stop at the front gate of Taylor Farms. I can see this kind of seeping out into our small community via their visits to our store, conversations and maybe with their small group of friends that they break with. I had a family member that used to work at the plant many years ago and he assured me that they do close down the plant during shifts and they spray this disinfectant foam everywhere on the surfaces. People have to glove up, wear these plastic suits, wear hairnets. That's fine, but what happens after on break and when they go home and when they congregate in the parking lot is what concerns me and when they float over to our town. What is being done to trace contacts of people that have floated over to Windmill to our small community? I feel like I need to speak up for San Juan. We are a small community and we are often not heard. And so this concerns me as a public health issue, not a labor issue. I don't care about people striking right now. I don't care about po- political lines. Um, I'm just really speaking out for San Juan and our small community. I feel like more needs to be done about this and less restrictions coming from the...
Thank you.
Hunter, if you could please state your name for the record? Hunter?
Yes, uh, thank you. So first, uh, I wanted to thank Supervisor Gilio for his letter to Governor Newsom on Friday and just point out that, that was, that was basically what many of us have been asking to see out of our elected officials. Just a little pushback against this madness of, of one man mandating blanket orders to all 58 counties with, with no nuance or allowing for individual counties to make some of their own guidelines. So thank you for, uh, Supervisor Gilio for responding to our urging. I hope to see that pushback continue if the governor continues to uphold this dictatorship. I'd also like to urge Sheriff Thompson to follow the lead of many of the sheriffs in the state around the camp, country who are challenging these governors and their abuse of power. And to explicitly tell the state, assure his people that his deputies will not be violating the constitutional rights of his constituents. I'd also like to challenge this notion that no one, including our elected officials, can have any opinion or say on these lockdown policies or if and when they should be eased if they are not epidemiologists. Believe it or not, we've had many great leaders in our nation's past who have helped manage many a crisis who were not medical doctors. I see nowhere in our constitution that states that we are to be governed by a medical dictatorship. I have an undergraduate degree in economics, yet I am no longer to have an opinion on what the consequences of all this may be, on the quality of our lives for years to come, or how the suffering from the shutdown might significantly outweigh the suffering from this virus because I'm not a medical doctor. The other point I want to make today is how the government at all levels have really overplayed their hand by coming down so hard for so long with the shutdown. And I'm, I'm, I think that your authority is, is being delegitimized. And what I mean is we are seeing across the state and country the last week that people and businesses are no longer complying. Because when a person's left with the option of defying orders or feeding their family, at some point they are always going to choose their families. It's a fact that many businesses are going underground and creating a black market in industries that would have probably gladly cooperated with local government on implementing new safety practices and protocol. But now people will be operating in conditions that are often less safe and less sanitary, especially those industries who have been delegated to phase three or four of this easing of restrictions. Many of these people just aren't going to wait months to go back to work out of fear that they may not have much of an economy to go back to by that time. And the threat of pulling business licenses becomes more and more of a hollow threat because really, who in their right mind wants to pay fees and renew licenses to a government who at any second may shut down your business? When industries become outlaw, yet still have willing clients and customers who will still gladly pay for their services, they no longer care about business licenses or even paying taxes, which in the end drives up funds from local government. These aren't threats, they're just realities and history's full of examples like this.
Thank you very much.
Um, so...
Thank you. Next speaker.
Courtney, if you could please state your name for the record?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
My name is Courtney Evans. Um, Saturday afternoon, I wanted to remind everyone that local politics affect our everyday lives. This board is our first line of government. The state has an obligation to support the right to health. The World Health Organization Human Rights and Health states the right to health must be enjoyed without discrimination. Non-discrimination and equality require states to take steps to redress any discriminatory law, practice, or policy. Another right, we the people have meaningful participation. That means that you need to ensure that national stakeholders, including non-stakeholders such as non-governmental organizations, have a meaningful involvement in all phases, assessment, analysis, planning, implementation, monitoring, and evaluation. These rights to health are both central to and dependent upon the right to food, housing, work, education, information, and participation. For them include the right to control one's health and body. On April 28th, Peter Hernandez suggested there be a committee. This committee was formed, the roadmap to recovery, met on April 29th at 2:00 PM, which Hunter Cunio and I invited ourselves to. There was 32 government stakeholders present. Besides Hunter and I, there were no non-essential or non-stakeholding representatives. On the 29th, I asked Peter Hernandez for the information to continue going to the meetings. He told me he didn't have it. Anthony, Anthony Portello told me there is an appropriate time for the public to be involved and an inappropriate time. This is an inappropriate time. Our human rights are via, being violated and I proudly speak against all of this going on in our county. Thank you.
Thank you, madam. Next speaker.
Hi, if you could please state your name for the record?
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Can you please state your name for the record?
This is David Patrick.
Go ahead.
Okay, so, um, uh, I, I think the local officials, uh, and the unelected health officers should have already shifted gears. The numbers given in February were way off, wrong by millions. Uh, in fact, CDC continues to revise the numbers down. Uh, we are sitting here with an empty hospital, statistically no cases, and you are implementing wa- uh, wearing masks? Even the doctor, uh, from, uh, Hazel Hawkins says they're going to be wearing masks just to make people feel safe. Uh, the officials should have been planning weeks ago for reopening. The numbers have been warranted for reopening. But nearly every official we have here is, is, has cement boots on. The time is now to make bold movement towards full reopening, not a slow, tedious, and unfair reopening, a full reopening of all business. The information is pretty apparent that the experts were overshooting by a large margin. The original one to two million deaths has been downgraded to about 40,000. At this point, that is two-tenths to four-tenths of one percent of the original estimate. Protestants try to say that it is because of the measures, uh, that are in place. Uh, that is illogical. The first known death in Santa Clara County was February 6th, a full month before lockdown, which means the virus was here conservatively weeks before. So when Newsom said we will have 25 million infected in eight weeks on March 19th, and now claims that didn't happen because of the lockdown, how is it that two months before the lockdown didn't affect millions? Or did it? Bottom line is, all the estimates were wrong and this virus has proven to be less lethal than the flu. Drop the mask order and open all business in the county. Until you drop the mask order, I and many others will just go to different county and spend money. I'm not wearing a mask. Stop spreading the fear. You are creating a problem that will result in a large percentage of people who are young and healthy, who will not rejoin society and they will likely become unhealthy and unemployed, causing them to become dependent on the government. We are still without our Fifth Amendment rights, due process. How can you even consider penalties and citations with no due process? The answer is you can't. It's unconstitutional. Open all business and let them decide how they will operate under normal regulation. Protect the vulnerable and make them stay home. Target the areas that are most at risk. Blanket house arrest makes your job easier, but is extremely destructive and unnecessary and unconstitutional. Since you are making rules, it's up to you to make the sensible plan.
Thank you.
A plan that does it.
Thank you, sir.
Frank, if you could please state your name for the record?
Yeah, this is Frank Barry. I'll be short here, guys. Um, yeah, um, I'm going to kind of piggyback on what Hunter Cunio was mentioning about Jim Gilio going out and sending a letter to the governor. I really appreciate that, that letter that went out because I really think that changed the, the dialogue between the counties and, and the state officials. Because he went from saying that we are out weeks before we were going to reopen and it overnight, over the weekend, it changed to next Friday, which is this Friday coming up. So Jim, I really appreciate you, go, Jim Gilio, appreciate you going out there and sending out that letter. Like I mentioned before, Peter Hernandez, you're doing a great job and Anthony Portello, you too. Um, I wish the other two supervisors would take a lead like you guys are doing and really get this economy going back to our county. We're going to need it. We're going to need that extra tax revenue. We need our local businesses back open and hopefully we can get all five supervisors in the right direction and, um, you know, look forward to having everything back open again. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Wayne, if you could please state your name for the record?
Uh, sure. This is, uh, Wayne Norton and I wanted to, uh, had a couple of questions about, um, the new testing facility. First of all, I'm really glad that we have a testing facility, uh, in, um, San Diego County. I'm wondering, uh, one, is, what's the contact information? How does, uh, one, uh, set up an appointment? How does one go through that? I didn't hear, maybe I had a bad Zoom connection, but I didn't hear Lynn, um, explain how to actually get an appointment. And the other thing I'm, I'm hoping is that soon, um, once the, uh, process has been, um, ironed out, that we'll have, uh, other, uh, testing stations, uh, for instance, in, uh, more rural parts, maybe in San Juan Batista and South County and, uh, other places because it's difficult for some of our vulnerable populations, including seniors, to get themselves to Hollister. We, you know, uh, there are definitely roadblocks and, uh, processes of doing that. So I guess, uh, my, the, sum up, my questions are, one, how do we make an appointment? How does someone make an appointment to get, uh, testing? And two, um, what's the timeline for getting, uh, uh, other test sites that are outside of Hollister? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
If you could please state your name for the record?
Hi, this is Deidre Anafreda. Can you hear me?
Yes, madam.
Okay, thank you. A couple of things real quick. Um, excellent point, Hunter, Courtney, and David. I would like to address the fast, the face covering issue again, and I would also like to address what the doctor says, that face covering need to stay as they do not cause economic harm. We wholeheartedly disagree. There are certain businesses that will not be able to open because of masks. As David pointed out, many of us are shopping out of the area. Many of us are refusing to wait in line and instead are shopping online. And, um, there is the mention of if we have a responsibility to our fellow community, completely agree with that. But we also have a responsibility to our fellow community to allow them to work and open their business and get busybeating and taking care of their families. To Courtney's point, your advisory committee did not include any independent contractors, small businesses, or restaurants. It involves people who are getting checks, who are being paid, and are part of other agencies. I don't think there's a understanding for leadership, how people felt on May 1st when they had to decide if they were going to pay May 1st lease and same business or if they were going to cut and run. That is torture for some of these businesses. Um, the employee people, they had to lay people off, they losing equity in their businesses. And I just don't think there's a fundamental understanding. Previously, I said to choose freedom, remove the mask order, let people who need to wear masks and let people who do not need to make that choice. I think I was a little bit misrepresented earlier, not intentionally maybe, but...
Okay, thank you. Okay, so first of all, let me go, my three minutes is gonna be up. Number one is, I want to acknowledge and a big thank you to all the nurses. It is National Nurses Week, and we all know, those that are in the know, know that nurses are the ones that keep the doctors in check. So big to our nurses out there. A big thank you to Dr. Garraducci for taking on the interim Public Health Officer position. If not for you, Dr. Garraducci, this county would have been left in a perilous situation, and it was very last minute, and I truly appreciate it from many of the people that are in this county. A lot of people don't call in, but trust me, they do appreciate you having taken on this position. Question to Tracy and to Lynn, if they can answer. You stated that, and Ms. Morris brought the issue up with regards to Taylor Farms. Has the Public Health Department taken a tour of Taylor Farms, or are you taking the word of Taylor Farms via just a phone conference? It's important to get out there, and I'm not gonna reiterate what Ms. Morris said because she was very eloquent about what needs to get done, and she's in the medical field, she knows what she's talking about. Migrant camps and labor contractors, are you, how is the Public Health Department going out there and either communicating with the migrants, going out and visiting migrant camps, and also talking to labor contractors? For the Public Health Department staff, are there sufficient PPEs for working, having to go out there, the staff having to go out there and walk and inspect businesses? Once we do start opening up in phases, are there enough, is there enough PPEs to keep our Public Health Department members safe when walking through these facilities and going into these areas? Anyway, also, I want to address the most important thing, I think, is that's put out there, is that you must test, you must track, and you must isolate. Overall, that's the most important thing, and I know that's what we're working on, and right now we have a hundred, you know, we were told that we have a hundred percent of the tracing. That's only a hundred percent of the tracing. If I remember to tell you, maybe I forgot somebody else, and we don't know that. And just like the workers at Taylor Farms, they're going out there and they're talking to people, and they may not forget that there was a person behind in line with them getting tacos, and they don't know who that person was. So it's really important that we try to get out there and we educate them. The most important thing of everything all out here is the public health over profit.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
If you wish to make a comment, please press star nine or raise your hand. We have no more public comments.
No more comments? Supervisor Medina, what are you gonna say? That's why I kind of paused for a while.
Supervisor Gillo? Yeah, while we're waiting to see if anybody else wants to chime in there, just a couple quick updates from yesterday's California State Association of Counties meeting. They are going to, according to OES, they're gonna make PPE available for local business, and there's already a priority to get it out to manufacturing facilities for food and farm and ag workers, so that's happening. And I believe yesterday our county, Chris, submitted a request for additional PPE so we can actually have it available for businesses as well. I asked the OES, I think it was Deputy Director, I'm not quite sure, and I wrote down the name, but I don't have it on me, and they said that this would be available for business as we're still in a state of emergency, and the reopening is considered part of the emergency, the economic emergency, and I'm very hopeful they stick with that. So there'll be potentially free PPE masks available for businesses, and once we get that at the county, we can figure out how we're going to roll that out. Testing, Mr. Norton asked a question about testing, and Public Health can answer that, but it was answered earlier, Mr. Norton, and basically they said we're in a soft rollout right now. They're testing on first responders and other folks to kind of work out the kinks as a federal testing system, and our Public Health is working directly with OptumServe at Vets Hall. The testing will be 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM every day, actually Sunday through Thursday, or is that Saturday through Thursday? I'll let that get clarified in a second here, and then the, I think the press release and how to sign up for that and get scheduled for our testing will be coming out perhaps towards the end of this week.
Thank you, Supervisor Gillo. Anyone else from the public?
Mr. Ismael Esposito.
Esposito, okay, no. Okay, now let's move on to number nineteen. Ray Espinoza? Or Dulce?
Seventeen. Seventeen, or? My apologies.
Hi, Board of Supervisors and Public. So I'm just gonna give a very brief update on some resources available to the business community and our community. Just a quick reminder that resources for our community can be reached at sbchelps.us. And as we gather new information, we have been updating our website. So next, I'm gonna actually invite Anna Medina, who's on the board. But quickly, I want to share that the county does have a fund. In June of 1992, EDA awarded three hundred thousand in grants. Two hundred thousand was matched by the city of Hollister and the county. And later in 2014, we transferred the sum of this account for, it was called Fresno County Development Financial Institution to manage and oversee. Since then, they have changed the name to Access Capital. So I have a representative from Access Capital, Anna Medina, who's gonna share a little bit of information.
If you're not speaking actively, can you please mute your connection, please? Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. So Anna?
Yes, hi. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Hi, thank you so much for inviting me once again to discuss the Grace San Benito County Fund. Just wanted to let you know, Board of Supervisors, that I have been working closely with Dulce and Mark Fontes. I appreciate all of the help that they have and information that they have provided to us to Access Plus Capital in basically making this fund a little bit more attractive. We definitely understand the need of local businesses that have, you know, not necessarily received either a PPP loan or any other type of federal loan product through the Small Business Administration. So these funds come in very handy, and we took your advice in basically reaching out to EDA and asking for their permission, approval, to basically do the same thing that Monterey County did with their funds and basically converting their revolving loan fund into an emergency microloan product. So I do appreciate, you know, the economic San Benito County Economic Development Corporation, Mark Fontes, for really, you know, encouraging us to reach out to EDA. So with that, basically, the loan amounts will be now from five thousand to twenty-five thousand. Interest rate will be 2.44%. It's a fixed rate, no prepaid penalties. The max term is five years, fully amortized. We are offering a payment deferment up to six months. So what that means is although the max term is five years, because of the deferment of the six months, that'll just be, you know, a little bit shorter because of the deferment. The loan fees are just our standard, normal loan fees that we'll be able to finance into the loan. The biggest fee is just the two percent origination fee of the total loan amount. Eligible purposes are for working capital, for business to be able to pay for payroll costs, including costs for employee vacation, parental, family, medical, and sick leave, rent, inventory, supplies, materials, utilities, and much more. So we do require that the business has annual revenues not to exceed two million, which is basically the guideline for SBA lending. So where we're at right now is, we are, our marketing team is working really, really hard to launch the landing page on our website so that businesses have a clear pathway on how to apply for this funding. I am in the middle of, I thought I would have it complete today to show you, but there are a couple of edits that need to be done. They are being done. I just followed up this morning with our marketing team, and they're being done right, completed right now. So I should have it to Mark and Dulce and everybody, all the partners there in San Benito County today, which is basically a term sheet that tells businesses all the information they need to know, and then also a flyer on how to apply. We do, we will make ourselves available to help businesses with technical assistance, basically guiding them on what documentation we will need, how to apply. So my team in business development is very aware of this program, and then our underwriting team is also very aware. So we are looking forward to receiving applications.
Thank you, Anna. Is there any questions specifically for Anna right now before I move forward?
Supervisor Gillo?
Just briefly, so one of the struggles we're having with this program, and I reached out to Congressman Panetta, and we've been working back and forth on this, have we made any headway on the retaining employees as opposed to hiring new employees? If we can clarify that, please. Thank you.
Yes, so that is, that is no longer a requirement. I mean, at least for now, to address, you know, what is going on with COVID-19 and how it's impacting businesses. So that for now is not a requirement for a business to qualify for this fund.
Thank you.
Once, you know. You're welcome.
Thank you, Dulce.
Yeah, as soon as Anna's marketing team gets that landing page and page supply, we'll link it onto our website for business resources, but it will have the criteria. And Anna, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe it's, the business must have between one and ten employees. The business must be located in San Benito County. Is there anything else specifically that's the criteria, Anna?
No, I think you mentioned some of the important ones. So yes, business must be located within San Benito County, should have between one to ten employees, must be operating a business, so not a passive, you know, real estate entity, and must have been in business for a minimum of one year, just because we do need to collect financial information. So that is another requirement that the business must be, have been in business for one year. And then also, we are asking that they present a feasible plan to recover post, you know, disruption. So post, so after all of this, you know, is over, we do want to see that they are, you know, thinking about how to get prepared and what to do maybe a little differently so that they can successfully overcome this. And your typical loan application, you know, requirement documentation is just one year of tax return. That's all we are asking for, and a business debt schedule, a personal financial statement, and other compliance documentation, like business permit, fictitious business name statement, and other type of documents that we normally collect for compliance.
Thank you. Thank you, Anna, for sharing that information. And then my only other update was industry virtual focus groups. So over the next three weeks, Supervisor Anthony Batello and Supervisor Peter Hernandez are, they have nine meetings set up for the various business sectors. Yesterday was our first round with the construction, landscaping, gardening. Tomorrow, we have agriculture, ranching, and supporting sectors. This Friday will be hospitality and food. So I just want to make you aware that we have, they're gonna be every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday at 5:00 PM. Our PIO has shared the links and information, and we're pushing this information out. If you need additional information or want direct links, if you don't have access to Facebook, please email info@... SVO... Sorry.
COSB.us.
Thank you. So again, that was info@cosb.us. And that's it for me for updates, and if the board has any direction for me.
Questions to the board? Supervisor Batello?
Yeah, I just want to elaborate a little bit on that information that Dulce just put out, and might be appropriate for Supervisor Hernandez and I to kind of outline our committee's activities during this past week. And we have done a lot of work. I want to really thank our staff, Dulce and Edgar, for a phenomenal job as far as organizing this focus groups, business sectors, calendar, to get guidance out to these industries. And I want to thank Supervisor Hernandez and I have spent a lot of time on the phone with each other and with our colleagues. Thank the mayors of the city of Hollister and San Juan Batista, as well as the chamber and EDC, and a number of organizations that have participated. We'll be reaching out to more as time goes on, and have, as these focus groups and sectors are going to try to convey the guidances from the state and our health officer, we need to get that information to these industries so they could open up to the public in a safe and responsible manner. And we are trying to work on the essential businesses first, as you can see by this calendar, and making sure that we address that. And it's, and then we're worked down towards, as the state allows us to open up more of our businesses, the tier early phase two and later phase two, we'll try to address those businesses, and have people that are involved in those industries share and exchange ideas because we don't have all the answers. And sometimes we, if we get an idea, we could work with it. Last week, we had a, one of our meetings, the faith groups were represented, and they suggested a practice of maybe sermons in a vehicle, and our new public health officer or doctor, you know, gave it a stamp of approval. So those are the type of successes that we could have when we exchange ideas with each other. We had our first focus group last night, 5:00. I call it night. For me, it's night. Some people, it's afternoon, but anyhow, it was on the construction trade, and we had two presenters from Anderson Homes and Granite Rock explaining their practices, and there's a lot to be learned from, and I hope people take it with a very open mind and think this is going to be our circumstances with this virus for a while. We cannot ignore that it's in the environment, there's some of our population, there's tremendously or tremendously vulnerable... Uh, we had our first focus group last night, uh, five o'clock. I call it night. For me, it's night. Some people, it's afternoon, but, um, anyhow, it was on the construction trade, and we had two pre- presenters from Anderson Homes and, uh, Granite Rock, uh, exploiting their, their, uh, practices. And, uh, and there's a lot to be learned from, and I, I hope people take it, uh, with a very open mind and think this is going to be our circumstances with, uh, this virus for a while. We cannot ignore that, uh, it's in the environment. There's some popul- of our population, that there's tremendously, are tremendously, uh, vulnerable, and we have a responsibility to protect them as well. And, uh, and that's what I, I think, uh, our committee is really, uh, working on is, A, let's, uh, provide us, uh, as, as safe of a reopening as we can, but let's reopen businesses, uh, in a very logical manner. And, uh, uh, that's what we're, you know, em- emphasizing. I, I don't know if Supervisor Hernandez probably has stuff to add. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No problem. Thank you, Supervisor Batello. Supervisor Hernandez, you want to enlighten us?
I appreciate it, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Yeah, uh, so it's along the lines of what Supervisor Batello was mentioning. Uh, it, it's basically the, the roadmap to recovery. I mean, uh, really considering the, the, this last six to, you know, now close to eight weeks, uh, the impacts of this, it's really taken a toll on us emotionally and physically. I, I feel like to a certain extent, there's a lot of things that are, again, that I've said before, that we, we really need to think about a holistic approach, talking about all the elements. And, um, and, and the supporting the impacts, really, it's, you know, right, the border supervisor took an action that was very, very, uh, you know, it was, it was expedient. It was necessary because it was an emergency, uh, on March 18th to do the shelter in place. But now it's getting to a phase where, you know, we got to acknowledge that, that there was damage that was created because of that shelter in place, and we, the border supervisors can't be, um, you know, we can't basically excuse ourselves from the damage that was done. So now we, where the focus is, and I know that, uh, that the border supervisors agree and support, which I totally appreciate, appreciate is that we're now getting into, how are we going to address that damage that was done? How are we going to support the businesses that we pretty much told them, stop doing business and, and, uh, and let, left them fend for themselves and ultimately just let the state or the Fed, um, try to jump in and help them, which has been a long and arduous process, having long conversations with the Chamber and EDC and, and even Cindy Merzon from SBDC. I mean, the impacts of it are, have become so overwhelming to a certain extent. I feel like, um, we, we, we should give a whole lot of love and respect to our businesses who did the best that they could to, uh, to do what they, you know, to, to respond to public safety and at the, and public health, uh, and at the same time, um, figure out how to either sh- have to shut down their business or, um, model their business in a way that was different so that they would, you know, try to support the bu- border supervisors and the public health officer and, uh, protect, protect the community. So, so down to the point is, um, you know, this is really, the, the roadmap to recovery was focused on injecting not only hope, but a plan. It was, it was about education and engagement and trying to talk about what it would look like for us as a business community and, and, uh, and along with the public health officer have a understanding of what the state guidelines are. And one supervisor mentioned earlier that, uh, this is such a moving ball, right? Uh, you know, from one week, it's like, we're not sure, it's two months out, to all of a sudden, oh, next week, uh, we're gonna open up. So that puts counties in a really tough position. So we've just said, we just need to come up with a plan, and if we have to change it a bit, whatever, to make sure that it follows the guidelines, uh, and we at least have some kind of momentum for that direction. So, so the, um, the, the RLF fund and, and we, you know, we worked really hard with, with county staff to, to get that, to model, to be modeled more as a, a responsive to, to the impacts instead of obviously originally, it was set to be something that was gonna support. Um, it was, it was, it was set for expansion, you know, so basically the, the criteria that previously, we're, we're obviously not consistent with what we need now. And then along that, the border supervisor supported, uh, you know, using some PPE funds. And, uh, right now, I'm of the sentiment that we use some of those funds, you know, because it was basically to support businesses, that those PPE funds basically now go into a grant process, that we, we, we do a lot of due diligence, but we make sure to infuse some money to those that are in dire need of basically, uh, going away forever, which we would be catastrophic in my mind, you know? The small business community needs to get a lot more respect and love. I believe, and I'm not just speaking from us, but just the statewide. Uh, and I believe we're having that focus, but, you know, we need more work. I think we're, we're still way behind. Um, but, but nonetheless, they're, they're 40% at least, and some people would argue they're closer to over 50% of our, of our, the strength of our economy of our country. Um, they, they literally are the innovators, the entrepreneurs. They're the ones that have to mold and adapt to trends and data. And ultimately, you know, as far as, it's funny, we talk about data, they're very data-driven and they find themselves, they should be figuring out what it takes to still be successful. And, and honestly, most folks, it's out of their hard-earned, earned money that they, they just dump their, their, uh, their investment into just an idea, and they're believing that idea is gonna take off, uh, which is huge. People that are just courageous and basically take a lot of risk, uh, and they ultimately are willing to do that risk without anybody, uh, necessarily, you know, basically being, they're, they're not dependent of their folks. If anything, they're very interdependent as a business community. So, uh, so the, the funding, the RLF fund inconsistent with the PPE funding, uh, and then also with the strategies of trying to come up with resources with the Chamber of Commerce and, uh, and, and the EDC so that we cut, create wraparound benefits and them to basically have, uh, uh, more of a holistic approach and, and to really fine tune or help them fine tune what it need, what they would need to maybe have an online, online presence, have, um, you know, a little bit, basically to become leaner and leaner, to have a lot, online presence. You know, if they need a website, uh, that website that, that has, uh, that ability to sell their products, their goods and services online, something that basically help them strengthen their model and make it even better pre-COVID-19. Uh, but, but yeah, I mean, the biggest statement that I just wanted to make is, is, uh, getting them back online as normal as possible because we know for businesses to be successful, they, uh, you know, even for those that were considered essential, they had to cut back their other, other revenue streams. Um, they, they basically now all of a sudden, they're, they're, they're 50% of, of their normal revenue generation, which isn't, uh, sustainable, you know? So again, I know there was one, one speaker that mentioned, oh, public health needs to be over profits. I, I completely disagree with that statement because the reality is that assumes that damaging an economy is hel- uh, economy is healthy for the public. It's healthy for, for families to, to be broke to, to the point where they find themselves having to struggle. And ultimately, like, one of the other speakers mentioned is, they're in a position, now they're in desperation mode, and, and that's not necessarily encouraging them to be safety, safety-driven, that now they're just maybe focused on figuring out what they can do to survive. If someone's drowning, they're not gonna have a ra- it's, it's not rational thought to assume that these people are drowning, therefore they're gonna just, they're gonna do what's safest in that process, right? They're gonna do what they can to just stay alive. And so anyways, that was the emphasis of, of this focus, and I appreciate Supervisor Batello was supporting, and especially with the border supervisor supporting us. Uh, we, we're, this is the roadmap to recovery. We really need to inject hope back into our community. And I want to get away, my last comment, Mr. Chair, is I want to get away from the doomsaying and the neg- you know, I just feel like there's, there's so much conversation that really creates this stress, and there's damage to health and the economy, again, trying to be consistent when there's this negative, negative statements that ultimately tries to, to a certain extent, it's like, expect that this is gonna be around forever and everything's gonna be just, I mean, I think if, if we want to hurt our, our, hurt public health and the economy, then those are the comments that you make. But, uh, you know, I, I just, in, um, when it comes down to it, data-driven doesn't mean getting into assumptions. Assumptions is a world of a whole lot of maybe yes, maybe no, and I think that's gonna create, uh, skepticism and distrust, which I'm already seeing from, from the business community and from, from even the, uh, the, the part, you know, basically from the public sentiment is, you know, when you're putting out information that, that is inconsistent with the reality that they're feeling, they're seeing, then, um, then they disconnect. They disengage and they do their own thing. My hope is that we as a board learn to work together harder than ever to be united as a community because otherwise, we can say whatever we want and think that we're a hundred percent right. We have a lot of data to support it. If the, if the community is disengaged, then we've lost them anyway, and that data means nothing to them. So those are my final comments. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Hernandez. Dulce?
Yeah, um, one thing I forgot to mention is we are ve- we are working very closely with other local business organizations. So, um, EDC, Mark Fontos, um, Kathy Johnson, they're gonna help us facilitate the, the meetings, um, going forward. Um, in addition, the Chamber has been very helpful, um, Downton Association, and in San Juan Batista, we have the Business Council. So I just want to acknowledge, um, and, and the, and Christina Wyatt from, uh, San Benito Business Council as well. So, um, I just want to acknowledge that our, everybody we're working with and how much, uh, they've had an input on this. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Dulce. I'm gonna open it up to the public. Do you have any comments?
Could you please state your name for the record, and you'll have three minutes of speak?
Hi, this is Elias Amínez. Um, so I've got a couple of comments, and as, but first of all, let's, let's be clear. The state mandated what businesses were essential. This was not based on the, on the, um, border supervisors. This was the border supervisors following the advice of the experts, which was the public health officer and the public health department, and those of the state that come down, down. Um, I want to, uh, also ask on these funds, I want to confirm that elected officials, these funds are not gonna be available to elected officials, and is there going to be a list of who is going to be obtaining these funds? And also, um, did I understand Supervisor Hernandez, that he's actually questioning the science behind this pandemic? Are you saying that this is not, this is not gonna be around for a while, and you have facts on this? Because we just had the public health o- officer tell us that this is gonna be on for a while. This al- not only was it Gil- uh, Dr. Bogie also said it earlier as well. So where does Mr., uh, Supervisor Hernandez get his expertise from? I am at all right here, right now, uh, listening to what he just said. Again, I want to emphasize that this is a real pandemic. This is not a hoax. We have seen people die. The closest that I've seen someone, know someone who passed away was someone in Gilroy. And public health over profits. I cannot emphasize that more than it, than anything. It's public health over profits. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Jackie?
Yes, good morning. This is Jackie Morse Lopez from San Juan Batista. Um, I also am concerned with what I just heard. I wasn't even gonna speak on behalf of this item, but it's all interconnected with item, um, number 18 and COVID. Um, Hernandez, Supervisor Hernandez just said that he heard a few of us mention that, um, public health over business. Well, I think that both are connected, and I think that we're not sounding the alarm and we're being hysterical or overstating the importance of the pandemic. I think if he is willing to look at science and not just a business model, that perhaps we could provide a viable form of business, but not business as usual for the small business owners. And I am a number one proponent of supporting small businesses and local businesses a hundred percent. But at this time, I, I actually know some people that own businesses in San Juan Batista, and they've chosen to remain closed for the next few weeks because they want to wait and see what the science has been telling us, that the numbers will tick up, um, real soon to identifying 3,000 more cases a day, and we have a second surge. This doesn't mean that the surge is happening in our county, but we have to also remember what the interim health officer said, which is wearing the mask is for me protecting you. And if we each do that, then we are all protecting each other. We also have to look at different business models. Online, um, I think the farmer's market should open up, and I think that it should be restricted to just food items and produce, not trinkets, not jewelry. But I think that, I, what I'm hearing here is that there are a few of you supervisors, and one of them that comes to mind is Supervisor Hernandez and Batello, that we need to open up full bore. I disagree. This is a real thing. This is a real threat to our public health and our mental health. I'm not hysterical. I'm being sensical and logical and methodical about this, and I feel that you need to take this seriously. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Hello, um, my name is Courtney Evans, and I wanted to speak in reference to the groups that were, um, that were mentioned that are part of this committee. And, um, I am a member of the Chamber here in San Benito County. I think that Michelle Leonard and the board is doing an excellent job. Um, and I would like to reiterate that there were no non-essential business representatives there. Every person there was funded or gets a paycheck from the government. And I asked that question at the meeting as well. Um, and another point, the, the group that Hunter Cunha and I are with actually have more members than the Chamber of Commerce. In reference to the public health officer and people stating about mental health and where people have. My business provides a safe environment and always has for every human to exercise their right to enjoy health. And I am asking for probable cause in these distinctions of what's an emergency. A- as my business, people have been reaching out with their extreme mental health concerns within their home, their spouse, their child. And mental health is still very much not a conversation that I've heard any public health officer really dive into. And I heard somebody mention that they knew someone in Gilroy. Well, guess what? I know so many people suffering here in our community with the side effects of the decisions that we are making. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Card.
If you wish to make a comment, please press star nine or raise your hand.
No more public comments? Okay, what's the direction of the board?
Let's get to her.
Yes, Ray?
I, I just wanted to add one more.
I had one more, uh, Mr. Chair, I had one, one more comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, so I just wanted to be clear. When I said this is gonna be around, you know, the question, this is gonna be around forever, that by default, my point is, is it creates this question about, is this shelter in place gonna be around forever? Because that is a way to trigger a whole lot of fear to the public, and that wasn't a clear, a clear statement. So I'm not saying that that is the case, but that's what I'm saying when the doomsaying, I'm not questioning, I'm not a medical professional. I'm not looking in to get into that dialogue. I've made plenty of, of references to my concerns about the data. Um, and, and they're factually driven, and you could just look it up at the previous meeting. But, uh, but yeah, i- i- I just wanted to be clear. Is, is the shelter in place, uh, is doing a damage? And if we keep talk- if we don't talk about loosening these things up, then, uh, there's gonna be a whole nother layer of issues that we're gonna have to deal with. And all of a sudden, then there, there are questions about, uh, you know, how long should a state of emergency be declared? I mean, I, I, I always assumed it was a short-term period, and now we're getting into a lot of months. So these questions are with a lot of merit, is, is, uh, which is why you're, you're sensing the frustration from the business community. Uh, and along with their constitutional rights, um, which I, I agree. I think the board needs, needs to talk about it and have county council, uh, encourage us or, or give us some feedback as to what the constitutionality is of the length of a cri- of a crisis, and ultimately, how long will, do we deflect to the, to the state making this decision when, when there's no guidance as far as how, when it's gonna end, you know? So it's, it's getting better. So I'm not, you know, but my point is, is these questions are valid questions that I think that we need to be asking them just to have a balanced conversation. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Hernandez. Ray?
Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to add one more thing. Um, I know Supervisor Galio highlighted quite a bit of things that were mentioned yesterday, uh, from the state. Uh, I just wanted to add a little bit to that with regards to the readiness plan. Um, you know, obviously, our, um, our doctor, along with public health, has to, uh, per- we have to present a plan. But, um, one of the things that came out of that meeting, uh, was that it had to be in collaboration with the board of supervisors. And I, and one of the last statements mentioned was, need to be approved by the board. So, um, again, they're still developing, so it was kind of a gray area. So with that being said, I just wanted to let the board know that we may be calling you Thursday or Friday for a special board meeting so that way we can move forward with this, just make sure that your, your schedules are available for that.
Okay, sounds good.
Yeah.
Okay, is there any direction from the board? None? Okay. Now we'll go to closed session. Uh, Barbara?
Okay, uh, number, uh, 20 is gonna be taken off the agenda.
Okay.
So we only have one set item, closed session conference legal counsel regarding pending litigation, Government Code Section 54956.9A, Preserve Our Rural Communities versus County Assembly.